I would like to get agenda approval.
I have one addition with respect to the sewer perjury speed. I can do that along with the other ones already on the agenda.
Correct.
I'd like to add something briefly in regards to the Council of the Arts and to make sure that we have a discussion in regards to the cable commission.
And also, I know we need an executive session at the end for legal?
Yes. One for me as well regarding litigation.
So both, I think, for having litigation?
Yes. Actually, and the third one from I have two involved in litigation. Well.
So three standards, all involving legal action. Any action taken yet?
There may be action afterwards, yes.
Also, I would like to add, we have individuals from Drescher and Malecki for our audit that are here. It's on the public's work sessions. So with that, I would ask that we motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
All in favor? Do the abstract approval, Councilman Serrato?
I move to approve the regular abstract of claims number 2128 to 2349 and recommend payment in the amount of $636,216.11 plus a post audit of $16,858.76.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Supervisor, I apologize, but I have one more addition to the agenda that will be with regard to the motions with regard to the establishment of the townwide water district.
Okay. Make a motion to amend the amendment agenda. Second. All in favor? Aye. I would like to ask representatives from Drescher and Malecki to step up to the microphone.
I'm Matt Montalvo from Drescher and Malecki, and with me is Carl Widner. We're here to present the results of the town's external audit for the year ended December 31st, 2016. What I'll do first is just kind of run through some of the required communications, and then I'll turn it over to Carl to go through some of the financial statement updates. So we did provide a handout for the town board members to look along. The first piece is really, you know, the format will be, you know, first the required communications, and that is to clarify what our responsibility is as it pertains to the audit. That really is to form and express an opinion on the financial statements. We don't accept responsibility for the preparation of the books and records. That's on management. But we come in as an independent third party and express opinion that the financial statements fairly represent your financial position. So we do plan on moving forward with what's referred to as an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. So that's really the best you can do from an audit standpoint, and we believe they fairly represent your financial position as of the year ended December 31st, 2016. No significant difficulties encountered during the audit. We received full, open access to the books and records. We were able to perform a full scope audit in accordance with our standards and express that opinion on the financial statements. As far as requirement of independence, and that is that all of our staff that work on the audit are free of conflicts of interest with the town, that allows us to be objective in performing the audit. So we were able to do that and again, express that opinion on the financial statements. So at this point, what I'll do is we'll get into the financial statement update. I think that's probably what everyone's interested in. So I'll turn it over to Carl, and then we'll conclude with just some overall observations on the audit.
Good evening.
Do you agree?
To start off, we'll be on slide four is where the presentation begins on the financial update. The basic format that we included in tonight's presentation is for each of the town's major funds, that being the general fund, town outside village, highway, water, and sewer funds. So we do like a three-slide analysis for each fund depicting the year's activity. Then we look at total fund balance, and then move into the components of fund balance. So to start, we'll look at the operations trend within the general fund. Compared to last year, the town was able to control costs while experiencing not as much of a decrease in revenues. This resulted in an overall increase in fund balance of about $130,000 in the general fund. The main contributor within revenues dropping a little bit was the modern tipping fees went down almost $100,000. I think that's a trend we've seen over the past few years. Some of these outside sources of revenue coming in are on the decline, and that's a challenge going forward when it comes to the budget, which you're, I'm sure you're experiencing currently. Moving on to the next slide, we take a look at total fund balance. So from '15 into '16, you can see that that increase of $131,000 last year. That's particularly nice to see after '12, '13, '14, '15, where we experienced use for decrease of fund balance. So a nice recovery year for the general fund after some trended spending or use of fund balance. And then when we look at the components of fund balance, you see that the general fund has moved into primarily all unassigned fund balance. Now that's the portion that we take a look at as, you know, the available fund balance. Authority spoken for or restricted by any other means, this is the money that's available to the town to use in their budget, to use for unexpected emergencies and so on. So at the end of 2016, the town ended up with just over $488,000 in their fund balance. This represents approximately 18% of next year's, the 2017 appropriations. So that's a comparison that the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, that's a percentage or a ratio that they look at, and they come out with an expression of, their recommendation is that you could cover two months of spending, a minimum of two months of spending, which was 16.67%. We went over this last year, if you recall. So when you're looking at the GFOA recommendations, you're right in line with that, in fact, just a bit above. Moving on to the next major fund being the general town outside village. Revenues did increase attributed to franchise fees, mortgage tax, and building permits this year. Those are going to flow along with the economy year from year. Kind of difficult to predict. Law expenditures remain rather consistent compared to last year. We did experience some turnover in the public safety area, so we experienced a little budgetary cost savings there. Had that not turned over, you know, maybe this surplus this year in the town outside village fund wouldn't have been so high. Moving on, taking a look at the total fund balance. It's a healthy increase in this fund. It went up $181,000 this year in comparison to last year's fund balance. And when we take a look at the components, in all funds other than the general fund, the portion that we're looking at is going to be the assigned for specific use. And that's just some accounting terminology. It acts as the unassigned fund balance in each of those funds. So that's your $1,281,000 number, which represents nearly 42% of next year's budgeted appropriations. So that's a level that the board, you know, can determine if you're comfortable with. One thing I want to point out on that slide number nine is, if you look at '15 and the years prior, there was some gray portion there. Last year was the $267,000. Within that was a portion of money aside from compensated expenses that each of the funds maintained. We did some digging with management this year and came to find that there was no real baseline or actual restriction on those funds that could be provided by the town. So that money did move into the general assigned for specific use. So you can see that that essentially disappeared this year. That's where it went. The money is there. It now lost that designation because there's nothing to support it. And that's going to be a trend across all the funds. Moving on to the highway fund, a pretty normal year. This is what you could expect. Revenues either staying the same or declining while expenditures are going to slowly climb up. At the end of the year, the activity resulted in about $60,000 increase to fund balance in the highway fund, which if you move on to slide 11, brings us to that ending fund balance of $510,000. So again, this is a nice increase after '12, '13, '14, where we were trending again using fund balance. Last year was a big recovery year for the highway fund, and '16 again, you know, improved upon that. Looking at the components, I'll just touch on that assigned for specific use is at just about 15% in the highway fund when compared to next year's budget. Moving on to the water district fund. Again, activity was rather consistent with prior years. However, revenues did experience some growth. I'd say primarily attributed to increased fees. We had a dry summer in '16. Expenditures didn't experience that increase due to the same other factor. At the end of the year, their fund balance improved $105,000. Looking at the five-year trend on total fund balance in water fund, again, you see the trend, a recovery from past years of using fund balance. This year, you were able to improve your fund balance. The assigned for specific use in the water district fund represents about 13% when compared to next year's budget, a little bit lower when you compare to the other funds. And one thing to take note is, most of your fund balance in this fund is wrapped up in customer receivables. So there's that lag between billing for the usage and then collecting. So one thing to take note, one later recommendation we'll add is to revisit your fund balance policy and improve upon that set levels. And this fund is particularly important to pay attention to cash flows, since most of your fund balance is wrapped up in accounts receivable, not yet collected. You want to pay attention to the cash flow in this fund. Last major fund is the sewer fund. You will see '12, '13, '14, that was prior to how we're working for the town. Previous auditors presented certain inter-fund activity within the different sewer districts gross rather than net. So that's the reason for the big drop from '14 to '15 activity. It is the same operations. We just chose for the presentation to net out the inner funds. It's more appropriate. The activity in sewer fund resulted in $198,000 increase to fund balance. When you look at the total fund balance, this fund has maintained a healthy position over the years. And let's say that that is something that a sewer district fund maybe isn't as appropriate to judge on a percentage of next year's annual appropriation or expenditures, because in funds like these, you have large infrastructure, emergency repairs. So when you look at the level of fund balance, I'd say the board wants to take a look at, what's your level of comfort with how much money you have on hand to take care and react to emergencies or maintaining that large infrastructure. Moving on, so that wraps up the financial update that we'll be including for tonight. Moving on to observations, we'd like to report on some of the internal controls and the procedures and operations within the office. And overall, we have improvements to report. If you recall, in the 2015 report, there was a material weakness regarding prior period adjustments, being that the records weren't accurate enough for us to put an opinion on. It required some large adjustments that we had to do. That finding is not included this year, so it looks like the cleanup that we did last year indeed got us on a good starting point, and '16 was a good cleaning year. Also removed is a finding regarding segregation of duties within the finance office. We found that a lot of tasks were being performed by the same individual without another independent person being part of certain cycles, so we reported on that. With the addition of some staffing in that office, that finding has also been addressed. So this year, a few of the findings that we want to include are listed there, being bank reconciliations. They are being performed. They are reconciling books to the banks. However, there are some best practices that we have shared with the town and want to continue to encourage those views. Departmental procedures, policies and procedures. The policies and procedures will include a fund balance policy, certain IT policies, and then also revisiting the purchasing policy too. But the main recommendation that we want to focus on this year is a planned use of the restricted funds. The town receives and has opportunities to get some revenue, maintain generally in the capital projects fund, that we should, the town should take a look at future planned use and try to align that with an updated fund balance policy and key levels where you're looking at, and talk about future capital improvements, maintaining infrastructure, those types of things. Kind of weigh all those in and create a five-year, 10-year lookout. So we'll look on that to kind of wrap up here.
Well, I mean, at this point, I'd open up for any questions. I know there's a lot of information for the town board.
Based on what you presented, with many positives, would you believe that Moody would give us a better bond rating based on this information?
Well, I mean, I can't, I can't speak for them on what specific indicators they look at, but I think from an objective standpoint, you know, there's certainly improvements that are tangible, that you can present to them and kind of plead that case. So I don't think that it would go any lower. I mean, but it should be favorable.
You mentioned a little bit about capital improvement plans in various departments. Obviously, we have different capital that we're working with. So for example, in the police department, we have vehicles, in the highway department, we have vehicles, but they have a much different life expectancy. Could you provide us with a little bit of your assistance with respect to best policy for each department, given their differences?
Uh, yeah.
Not necessarily right now.
Yeah.
I think in the future, that would be one thing that I think between Marty, town board, and yourselves, maybe we can put our heads together to figure out. You know, I know that one size doesn't fit all when it comes to those kind of capital plans, and again, with your experience, I would hope that you can bring that to the table.
Yeah, we have developed a capital planning model that we've worked back with other entities on, and it is pretty customized, customizable. So, you know, you can have those conversations and certainly.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I just want the board to know too, that for the last year, we've been working on both the fund balance policy and the five-year plan.
Right.
And it's a bunch of notes all over the place in a file that we are part of the budget process. We're hoping to get that all in so that we are really looking at, and not only looking at the five-year plan and what each department needs, but what the possibilities of different funding sources are. So some things may qualify for Greenway reimbursement, or, you know, a project, or other things won't, you know, where one thing might qualify for using the NIPA infrastructure money, which something else won't. So we're kind of going beyond the normal just a five-year plan and saying, okay, this is what I want. And I've been working with each department on an ongoing basis and trying to figure out exactly what those needs are, what the dollar amounts are, so that we can, you know, our first goal is to get this thing turned around. We've done that. Now we're trying to pinpoint exactly going forward and to be looking more than just the immediate need. We want to be looking out for five and even 10 years.
Yeah, and you want a flexible model to, you know, that you can adapt to different changes.
The other thing I wanted to mention too is, the reason that this year was so critical is because of going to the water funding and the bonding. And that's why we've worked so hard at getting those expenses and revenues into control and trying to have a positive fund balance. That is, one of the things, if you look at Moody's report and what they said, it wasn't so much that we used our fund balance, but that we had so consistently used our fund balance. And so by turning that around, I think that there's a good possibility that we could, you know, at least we won't go far, I mean, farther down, but I really want to get that back up if at all possible so that when we go to this bonding in 2018, that will be. It makes a huge difference in what it costs the town over the life of the bond. And, you know, a single rating can make a difference of $300,000, $400,000, $100,000. I mean, so it's been very critical for us to work on that and get that back up.
I have a question for Marty. Does Moody's ask us for an updated picture, or do we present it to them in the time of the question?
No, it'll be at the time that we need it. One of the things that we're doing is our ban next year, which is the highway ban, is going to have to go first. Will probably go first. By having it under $1 million, we don't have to seek Moody's rating, okay? So the first rating that we'll have is when that water line goes to bonding. And so we've got a little bit of, you know, hopefully we can get some in 2017 because that water line will probably be a ban initially, which is a lower rate, but it's a much shorter time period, and will give us a little bit more time to really build that up before we have to go to Moody's. But it'll be at the time of that bonding is when you go to Moody's.
Okay. Moving on to old business. We have the townwide water district.
The last meeting, we began our public hearing, and we heard comments from a couple of residents. I've submitted to the board for your consideration three different resolutions that if and when you're ready to move forward with the project at the EPC center. I guess before we get to go, I'll ask any questions or anything the board wants to discuss with them.
I know we tabled this the last time. We didn't take any action because we only had three board members, so we have everybody here. So I would be, I would encourage moving forward on these resolutions myself. If anybody's got any questions for Brian?
I got a couple. I don't know if it were for team, you more than, now that we've talked about water on this, since that development proposal on Bronson, people have been coming out of woodwork for water pressure. Everywhere I go, I get somebody coming up to me, and it, there's been a few areas, Myers Hill, Lower Mountain Road, the Circle, Bronson, Richmond. I, it's shame on me for not knowing, but I didn't know we were using, was it a 12-year-old study that, testing that we're using for this water line? I don't know if it's, we should.
Red water model was burned out in 2007.
In 2007. I don't know if there's other, what I don't want is next year to be up here and tell me, well, we have another three miles of water line that has to be corrected and start this whole procedure again. I don't know if we should do some testing on other areas. Mike, did you get a chance to do any of them? I asked you.
Tested North Circle.
How did they fare?
Poorly, like the map indicates.
Yeah, we already got Circle and Bronson tested poorly. I mean, if we need another two miles, do we do a testing and, or we?
The one on Bronson was, there's no issue. That house was tapped on a 16-inch water line.
Oh, that one was okay. It was a circle. That was bad. I'm sorry. I don't know what, you know, I would just, like I said, I don't want to be up here next year going through this whole same procedure. We need another two miles of water lines. I think we should redo a test on at least certain areas of the town.
Is what you're saying, that if you're going to do it, you may as well do it altogether right now?
Right. I don't want to be up here next year and doing the same thing.
Makes sense. Is there?
I didn't realize. I mean, the whole town private could use a new water.
I mean, that's the thing, of course, got to recognize, we're not redoing the entire town's water system to this project. There are going to be additional water projects.
In the future?
There are going to be water mazes that are going to have to be replaced in the future. That's part of the, what Marty was talking about is setting this plan forward so the water department will be part of that, is to, what's the long-term plan? Which are the worst parts of the town, which don't need attention, which to do, and setting some type of plan over the years. There are going to be other projects and other monies.
You're not getting an argument, we'll be there, but is there fire hydrants without adequate flow right now that, you know, after there's a fire and the firemen go and hook up and there's no pressure, and then we're doing this? I don't know.
I think that's what helped me out here.
I think that's what the study kind of shown, is that the areas that we selected were not the worst. Now, I would assume that the study would also allow you to do a second category of seriousness where the circulation is kind of affected the water flow. Is that right, Mike? I mean, are you able to kind of set a second tier, if you will, of hotspots or things that if you had additional money or where you would go to look next to say that there's a problem in the water system?
Yeah, based on the model, I mean, for one thing, I can give you a list of water mazes that have been replaced since the 90s, and I can submit this to you. You can look it over, give it to the public to look it over. I can read it off to you if you want. You can't do it all at once. It's going to be too costly. Since the study was done, they've replaced Mountain View Drive, which was very low. They've replaced Woodland Forest and Almanpan overdrive. So they progressed, and before that, there's a slew of roads on here from 2003 and beyond before that, the 90s attracted 2,000.
So, you know, there's been significant improvement in the water lines that have been replaced. Mountain View Drive is 11,000 feet. The other areas might refer to it anywhere, five or six miles or so, thereabouts in 2003. It is significant, as expansive as this current project that's being contemplated is. It's not going to eliminate the need to pay consistent attention to your infrastructure from now on.
Will it be more in the future? Absolutely.
Absolutely.
There's still more cast iron out there.
Yeah.
But if we have a failing hydrants already on the Circle, and, Carl?
We've already prioritized that these were the most urgent areas that needed to be addressed. I believe we should move forward with those, and then still within our own internal budget, see if we can address some of the other issues that have been identified.
And I asked, Mike came to me originally and told us we had these issues, and he worked with Bob Lannan on identifying the primary major issues. When we talked about Scarpen Drive, we even talked about that being a smaller project that the highway department, along with the water department, might be able to do with town employees. It's a smaller project. These bigger ones cannot be done with town employees. It's got to be the workout. So I agree, we're not going to correct every problem with this project. It's the major, I mean, it's a major, the town's going to be way better off after this project. Is it going to be perfect? No. Can we make it perfect? I don't, I don't know. I mean, yeah, we can, and what costs them, that's the problem.
Even if two years down the way, we want to have an additional project, we can go to bonding for that if we need to. But right now, bond rates are low. We have all this laid out already with, at the level of power of this consultation, I think we should move forward.
Yeah, if you change it now, the rates will be put on the entire price.
We're pushing for that January date. We're going to get the best bids from the contractors.
I got a great counsel guy.
Me too.
Carl, I just wanted to touch a point. I know we've made a lot of calls, and if they put a development in on Bronson over there and we're already having water pressure issues.
Yeah, that would affect, there's a 16-inch water line runs down Bronson, and a 12 down Upper Mountain Road. There's a lot of water there.
Did we determine if this comes later, how we're paying for this? Does this come later, at a later time?
The way the, the way the planner report are set out is that the, the annual debt service would be funded through a real property tax. That's how it's set up. But as I explained at a couple of times at different meetings, how much your taxes is based on how much your revenues are in any given year. So if the board chooses to increase water rates, then Marty's going to put in the numbers for increased revenues on water rates into the books. That's going to result in needing to raise less tax. So in other words, it's set up to be as a tax, but how much that tax will be can fluctuate depending on how much revenue you make through selling water.
So the whole thing's going to go on the tax, as much as you're telling?
No, it's within our prerogative to set our water rates at such a level as that the taxes can then be adjusted.
That will be up to you. That'll be up to the board.
The monthly payment or our annual payment is flat. It's set, once we set it, the bond will play.
We can look at it every year, correct?
Well, sure. You're going to owe a certain amount of money every year to pay back that bond.
Whether we raise it in taxes or water bills, it's our prerogative.
How you pay that $500,000, $700,000 a year is up to the board. Is it going to be by increasing water rates? Is it going to be by a tax? It's going to be a combination of the two. You'll be able to determine that, and you can change it from year to year. The way you do that is by adjusting your water rates.
When you're doing a, well, this is more to you. When you're doing this, design and build, designing bid and build process, are you charging each one individually, or is it? each one individually or is it--
That's how I'm reading it on, you know, I went online and read it when something this big, you would do it in three stages. It's telling me the design, the bid and the build process is how you would build. Is that how it's done or--
Yeah.
So you would break this down--
There'll be a, there'll be a design component, okay? Where we develop could be 50 to 75 or more drawings, big drawings, and the contract documents. So that's the first step. And when that set of documents is submitted to the Health Department for review, get their approval, then we go out to advertise for a bid for construction, okay? Because we put out the bid probably for, could be up to a month where we solicit a bid from the contractor. We open those bids, select the lowest responsible, responsive bidder, okay? The board then will take steps to enter into contract with that low responsible bidder and we will, then we'll go to construction. And during construction, there's kind of two parts of the service. We'll provide contract administration, okay, and resident inspection. The Health Department, when they give your approval, will come back and says that the construction of all of the water facilities that they approved will be, have to be done within a certain amount of time and be under the, under the supervision of a licensed engineer practice, an engineer licensed to practice in New York State. And then we'll go to construction. And that'll involve members of my firm, the Water Department and Mike and his staff and the contractor. And then we'll proceed for construction.
Now, I know you put a 15% fee. It's a rough estimate of what you'd be charging, but are you gonna use your town fee schedule when you're doing the design and this or the whole project? I mean, you have a fee schedule with the town each. We have engineers so much.
Right, yeah. That's part of our agreement. That's just our standard hourly rate.
Right, I understand it, but is that what you're using when you bill us for this?
That would be the basis of my establishment.
So if it's two hours, this one, it'll be 200 bucks or 150 bucks. And then would I be able to get a list of names of employees who work for GHD on that? Who's ever working for you? Your employees? Okay, according to the town code, there'll be an engineer on site with ID during the construction of the water line? Is that what's gonna happen?
That'll be our resident inspector.
And then I like to have, do like either a monthly or a two-week view of billing to the, to the town so we know where we're going. This can be once a month?
We would submit invoices monthly, just like we do now.
I've never been through one of these, so it's--
No, it's a big project.
So we'll report monthly to the town board meetings and that's basically it. As long as we have that. All right. Okay, Brian, what else?
Okay, we have, there's three resolutions for the board to consider. The first is to, for the town board to declare itself as lead agency for secret review. And if you recall, a couple of months ago, we did a resolution where the board signaled its intent to be lead agent. We sent out notices to all of the agencies that were required to and none of them responded back that they wanted to be lead agent, which is typical. Lewiston's the primary responsible agency. So I have a, I prepared a resolution for your consideration declaring the town of Lewiston as the lead agent for secret purposes.
Make a motion to approve the resolution declaring the town of Lewiston as the lead agency for environmental review seeker as presented.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then the, the second is also under seeker. The engineers prepared the environmental assessment, the first environmental assessment form. They took into consideration the comments and whatever we received back from various agencies and completed a part two and a part three for your consideration. There were no major environmental concerns noted and if you think about it is, we're really replacing existing infrastructure that's already in the ground. We're not going into areas that have not been already dug up. It's mostly highway right away, so it's not unexpected. And if the board's ready at this point, then you could, you could make a motion to issue a negative declaration on seeker.
Make a motion to accept a negative declaration, declarations on seeker with respect to the water project.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the third resolution is the, the resolution approving the establishment of the town Lewiston Water District and the construction of the water system therein at the estimated maximum cost. That resolution has been put before you. There's a number of findings and, and things that you make in there, including establishing where the water district will be and many of the things that we've talked about and I quite bet through the past months in this project.
With the approval of the resolution approving the establishment of the town Lewiston Water District and construction of the water system therein, a maximum cost of $10,200,000.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions on the matter?
Yeah, this is for the project to go ahead.
This is for the project to go ahead. If we can do a roll call, go on then.
House of the Mass.
Yes.
To Oriole?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to whole business, our medical bill.
For your numbers, we had an issue on reimbursement for our employee repairing to co-pay. We've been in agreement that the union agreed to. It's not gonna set up a past practice of the town. So what is needed now would be a resolution to approve the agreement, pay the $255 dollar claim and authorizing supervisor to sign.
Can you elaborate the circumstances again, just so everybody's aware?
Yeah, so basically what happens is if you have, the policy of the town is to reimburse co-pays as long as you submit that with any certain time period. This particular employee that ever got paid bill from the treatment provider until after the time period had elapsed, that money, it's not like goes away. It comes back to the town when it's not used. So she submitted it as soon as she got the bill. It just happened to be after the time period that the town sets its policy. So because it had nothing to do with her own reasons or anything like that, she didn't sit on it. She presented for the town when she got it. And if something had, she got it earlier and presented for the town, they would have been paid for it.
And again, what you mentioned is you talked to the union so that this was not going to be a precedent setting.
Exactly. Because of the unique circumstances in this particular case where it was no fault of the employee, the union has signed off on the fact that this create a past practice which would find the town going into the future.
And it actually can't happen again because we gotta move up plenty of proof. So it would make it, it's obsolete. So this will be the last time this is gonna even happen, so.
Based on the advice of the attorney, I move for reimbursement of the medical bill of $255 to Ms. Norwich as a non-binding action.
Okay, approved that and then there's gonna be another one authorizing supervisor to sign.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to authorize the supervisor to consummate the agreement and reimburse the $255 to Ms. Norwich.
Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, moving on to the Niagara Bible Church, Bronson Drive. I'd like to ask Mike Dashiell, is there anything more with that?
Last meeting, we said we were gonna discuss it at the Recreation Commission Committee level. We haven't had that meeting yet, so we'll be doing that next.
I attended the meeting they had with Bill Conrad had up at church up there with the concerned citizens about the new project up there. And one of them was a lack of facilities for kids, playgrounds, stuff like that. So it might, you know, working with the Recreation Department, it might not be a bad idea. I know they have some concerns with, with the way the parking lot pulls directly up to the playground. There's no separation. It may be a viable project to work with, with the church and make sure we get stuff in, you know, etched in stone and have the opportunity. And I did reach out to the developers of that project and let them know that we were considering doing that and they were gonna try and incorporate that somehow as well, so.
Unacceptable.
Yeah, so, okay.
Anything on the historic preservation law amendment?
That is what, been sent up to the county for their approval. There was a little bit of delay. It was sent to me back at the beginning of July. However, when it got to me, my email assistant declared it a virus and sent it into quarantine without notifying me. So a couple of weeks later, I asked out where it was. She said she had sent it out, so I turned around and approved it and it has been sent to the county.
Okay, thank you.
It's out there August 21st.
And the electronic message display side?
Same thing. They were, they were being sent together. That way when we do send state for approval, we're only paying the one fee instead of two disseparations.
Moving on to the approval of the minutes from 7:24, townwide, or a public hearing, townwide water district and a regular town board meeting.
For approval of the 5:04 public hearing and townwide water district and will the town board be as presented?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention?
More, seven.
Okay, two abstentions, okay. Three A's and two abstentions. Okay, the 2016 annual stormwater report.
This is emailed to everybody. It's the standard form Mr. Ritter had circulated. Just asked that it be executed, be actually circulated or approved it. Just asked that it be signed by the supervisor.
So-- All in favor?
Aye.
Sewer refund. I have two. There's one addition from Carl G. Beshira. This one, everyone's received it?
Yeah.
25,000 gallons of water. The gentleman did provide a receipt for Mr. Pool whereby the liner of his pool was replaced. I make a motion to refund the amount of eight, I'm sorry, $97.40 to Mr. Beshira.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
The second one is from Mr. Brinkley O. This particular claim unfortunately has to do with one of those automated water sump pumps that pumps out more water than it's running into your sump pump and unfortunately it was defective. What's more unfortunate is the fact that it doesn't fit our town policy. Spoke with Mr. Ritter and what we're concerned about is that if we authorize any more refunds outside of our practice or our policy, it's gonna turn Mr. Ritter into law enforcement, if you will, on that issue and we don't wanna do that. We wanna maintain our policy. If someone's interested in managing the policy, we can do that later, but at this point, it doesn't meet our criteria and stuff.
Beautiful. Do you agree with that?
Yes. You can't serve a person. I feel bad for him, but this is--
I do too.
I really do. Could happen to anybody, but there's specific guidelines we have.
Is there anything we can do in our code to protect future residents of this condition? They have a right to this type of sump pump.
They can check out their own homes.
I think you just need to be vigilant, unfortunately.
You should be able to hear from the water.
Oh, yeah. We just replaced ours. I mean, ours was only two years old and we had to get it.
It went bad?
Yeah, so.
It's actually happened to quite a few. Quite a few people. They noticed it though before it went on.
Got to this stage.
Got to this stage.
Sounds so good when you read the Italian.
Well, it works. You gotta be vigilant.
So we'll take no action on that.
Mr. Ritter, would you mind reaching out to Mr. Brinkley O for us?
Sure.
Okay, fire company additions to roster. Sanborn Fire Company, Sanborn Fire Company Incorporated here with submits for active membership and said fire company, the name of Ryan Fohl of 3154 Raymond Road.
So, second.
All in favor? This is from Upper Mountain. The following person's application for membership has been approved by the Upper Mountain Volunteer Fire Company. We request that the town add their name to the Upper Mountain Volunteer Fire Company town roster. Matthew Maz Lanny, 691 Sarah Court, Lewiston, New York. All in favor?
Aye.
This one's a removal. The following person is not a member of the Upper Mountain Volunteer Fire Company. We believe she may belong to a different fire company. We request that the town remove their name from the Upper Mountain Volunteer Fire Company town roster and that is Charlotte Monday. All in favor? Turn it over to Marty Wazik for finance.
As you know, our ban is scheduled for renewal. We are going out to bid and we need to accept the bid on August 24th. I need the board to authorize the supervisor to award the bid to the lowest bidder. We don't know who that lowest bidder is going to be. Yeah. We, but you need to authorize somebody because somebody has to be here on the 24th to make that choice based on the information that comes in. We've got one more year. We've already approved that we were going to go out to bid. I just need to have the mechanics ready because on that date at 11 o'clock, we'd have to make a decision at who that lowest bidder and accept that bid.
Is that processed properly in my head? Because to my knowledge, we've never had 11 o'clock. We have to make that decision?
We always have.
Just based on looking it over and the supervisor--
It'll base, be based on municipal solutions recommendation.
There you go. I knew there was something.
So, second.
All in favor? Aye.
And then I need you to authorize the supervisor to sign all the paperwork on the sale on September 7th, which will be based on that.
All in favor? Aye.
Just for the record, Marty, if you could just expand. It's a bond anticipating mode being converted to a full bond.
No, it's stay in a ban. We're just renewing the ban.
Stay in a ban, one more year.
For one more year.
Oops, sorry. Because we wanna get it to a certain level.
Right. The budget meetings, I've, I've, I've sent out to you guys a tentative schedule. I didn't really hear back from anybody. I know, well, Bill Guyven and I did. Bill, I'm trying to get the dates set for the times that we are going to interview the department heads and the nonprofit organizations. The one, Ryan told me tonight that there's no reason why the tentative budget couldn't be done on the same day as our first date of meetings in the morning because you are going to have that budget long before that, that time. Other than that, I know that Bill Guyven is going to miss several of those meetings. So he is, he and I have already talked about, I do preliminary meetings with the board members and all, and I'm gonna try to incorporate him into as many of those as I can. And then I will update him on the meetings that we have if there's anything different or, or change. But was there any other problems with the dates that I sent out? Are you all okay? Because it does require a commitment from you guys for two days to meet with everybody. So that was okay? All right, that's all I needed to know on that. I also gave you a budget adjustment for the fire department, or for the fire fund. This is just moving, both the insurance liability and the service awards came in under budget and I just wanna move that to the physicals because I feel like I underestimated the cost of the physicals. And so that's just a simple budget adjustment that I sent out to you that I need you to approve.
Okay, can I get a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
I guess the, the one thing that, based on the audit that we didn't talk about in that, is the auditors did ask that the Greenway and the hydro, the town's portion of the hydro be moved into a capital fund. And so I have established those capital funds. The Greenway will be handled as an H96 and the town's portion of the hydro will be H98 where they've been in trust and agency. They really never qualified as a trust and agency account and so this is part of our trying to clean things up. And so we have established that those capital accounts and I just wanted to inform you of that.
That'll be H96, H97 and H98 ultimately, right? For our capital accounts.
Well, those are, the H96 will be Greenway, H97 is the hydro, or is the NIFA's annual. The H98 will be the hydro portion. So I've kept all of the NIFA, H99 is also the settlement. So they're all right next to each other. Yes. So that was more just to inform you of that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Marty. The main meeting on RFP, town clerk.
Back in May, we forwarded a RFP to four-- Back in May, we forwarded a RFP to four, actually, it's back in April, we sent it out to four different companies, and we received some back. The town board decided not to move forward. We changed the RFPs a little bit to make it a little bit easier to get people to bid on it. That was in June. I sent it out to six people, and we received one bid from...
Mike Kelly Construction.
Yes. Sorry. From Mike Kelly Construction for the amount of $34,882. The town has the funds from 2015, 2016 is $18,500. The 2016, 2017 funds is $10,000, for a total of $28,500. So at this time, I'm asking the town board to see if we can find the additional dollars that are needed, so this can be done. Otherwise, we lose the grant money, and I mean, I don't know how else to make the RFPs so they can come into those dollar amounts, because of what we're choosing to do. And I've sent it out to so many different companies so many different times, and we're just not receiving any replies from them.
There's also an issue as to whether we can do it in-house or not, is that correct? We try and get some, like a motion?
That's kind of been off the table now.
That's what I understand.
Yeah.
So we need to do it out?
That's why the RFP has changed.
Mr. Supervisor, would it be appropriate for you and Donna and Marty to meet and see if you can find some additional funding and consummate this issue?
Well, I believe in our infrastructure.
Well, we do, but we also have, there is, you have contingency funds in the A Fund which we have not touched for 2017, that you could use that to fill in, since this is so much closer. I mean, the first bids were just astronomical.
Right, they were approximately $6,000.
Right.
Yeah.
It would also, I think that, and Ryan can tell me whether that's true or not, I think this also fits within our infrastructure requirements for H97. But I would probably just take it out of the contingency fund, since it's there and we haven't had to use it and hopefully won't. But I think that, my one question down there is, are the courts in agreement that this is the work they want done?
Yes, they might have thought in the whole conversation.
That's what I thought.
Absolutely.
I was pretty sure that was true. So, because this is through the justice grant, so they need to be 100% on board with that. I would say that we need to, I mean, the one grant is already on its second year, so we're going to lose this money if we don't get this done.
Okay. Do we have the money now?
That's what I'm saying, is the difference, which is, oh, we physically, yes, we do.
The grants?
Yes.
Because he's requiring 50% down payment and signing contracts.
Yes, we have received that grant money.
Can you put a call in and ask him if there's any wiggle in this, or? Nobody's actually, he's the only guy that, right? He's the only guy.
Yeah.
He doesn't need the wiggle. Yeah, yeah.
We pared down this project a couple times. As long as it needs the safety elements that we've talked about, the aesthetics is nice, but we need to make this room safer, and that's part of this, correct?
That particular wasn't the first time around, but no.
This is all drywall.
This is just the aesthetics.
This is aesthetics and the guy.
If we can find the money, I'd like to go back to the safety issue too, that we talked about for a while.
Oh, we can, whoops, sorry. We can do this, and then we could always go back to the safety issue.
As long as it fits, it doesn't, we don't have to go back and change some physical that we've done.
I think it would be a secondary, yeah, right, right. It would be a secondary. In the safety issues, a lot of it were the window in the courtroom. It would have nothing to do with the actual courtroom, correct? It was more the window and the handicap access and the glass, and so it's two separate entities. I mean, what you're talking about is, you know, we already have the manacrometer, you have that man, so as far as security coming in here, as long as everybody's doing their job, including mechanical aspect, the safety issue plays here, so.
Yeah, and then at one point in the beginning, we did talk about the railings, you know, out front to keep the people back from, until it is their turn to come out. That was a concern too, but that, the majoredness of this can be done, and then you can just, somebody can just put a railing in.
However, you need to add that to our five-year plan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So this would be, like I said, this would be the first step of the project, yeah, so.
The window and even that railing can be submitted this year under the courtroom. I talked to, I talked to Maria, and we're going to submit for the window replacement and the safety issues for that, so we need to add the railing part of that. There's definitely room.
Okay. What's most important is what's approved or covered in this particular bid at this point, you know?
It does not overlap or something that we're going to have to tear out?
No, 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 no. It's the first phase of this project.
This is, Tommy, I've not gotten involved in it all. Are there guidelines on how you're supposed to set up a courtroom?
Yes.
So that, we know what we're doing?
Well, this is also used as your main meeting room, so I don't, I can't answer it. You have to follow for the courts, just the courts. This is used as a meeting room for all kinds of people, all kinds of things.
I think we're good there, so. What I would say, Marty, by the fact that we're getting this grant, $28,500, plus Marty's staying, we do have the money in the contingency fund, and I would ask for a motion to approve moving forward. Do these, the fact that we only got one bid back, we good there?
I think that's an issue. If you were supposed to have three written, it doesn't say if you send out half a dozen requests and you only get one back, you can move forward. It says we need three written. So I would be of the opinion that we should send us out to more people.
Do we know why they're not responding?
No, I don't. I can't answer that. They're all local, you know, they're local people. One, two, three, four, five, six. I mean, I've sent, and I've sent each time, each time that I've sent them out, it's to the same six people, and each different RFP, as they've been changing. And the very, like, the first time, we got people, but their numbers were just, it was $50,000, $60,000, and we just, that looked as something we're going to use to. It was a totally different presentation that they were presenting. We kept narrowing it down.
Here's the problem, if legal's saying we can't accept it, then we're going to have to find three written bids somehow, some way. I'm just, I mean, I would offer to assist on this, and, you know, I can call these contractors to find out, you know, what the reason is for not...
Submit something, right? It may also be a decision, but maybe it's a season going in, spring and summer, they're busy outdoor projects.
Yeah, it could be. But I mean, they, but they also need to be setting up, you know, they need to fill the kitty before the fall, because, you know, they tend to keep stuff coming. Now, this is good winter work.
Bernie, can you speak to the vulnerability of these funds as far as us losing them?
Really and truly, we're okay. If we got the money to do it, we just need to do it. We need to accomplish it. That's, we need to close this thing out and get it done, so.
But nobody's looking to take all the money out of the fund right away.
Okay. Do you think we can get three, at least two more bids in the next two weeks? I can follow up with these contractors and just, you know...
I appreciate that, though. So, I know Donna, you won't be pleased with this, but I say we table it for two weeks and try and get two more bids to make it a valid bid and...
Dog control concerns.
It has been brought to my attention that, well, we have a dog control officer, and we have, we had a deputy dog control officer. The deputy dog control officer has now moved to a different department. But prior to that, if individuals called, if police called or individuals called and said that they had a dog, and they were unable to get a hold of either one of those gentlemen, they would call me and I would go get the dog. I have been told by Ag and Marcus that even though I am an employee of the town, picking up dogs is working outside of my job duties unless the board says that it's okay. Like, I could be the assistant control officer. Because when I'm driving, you know, to Wilson in this van, and something happens to me and the dog, the town can just say, well, you really shouldn't have done that, is what Ag and Marcus is saying.
So that's...
My concern is that, that's my, you know, and in my opinion, it's not, police officers is not the residence concerned to have to worry about the dog.
Well, I gotta commend Donna, because it's something she wants to do, to help out other places. You'd have to probably hire somebody else or, you know, make somebody else the, another assistant dog catcher. So I appreciate the fact that Donna likes, enjoys doing it, wants to do it. So whatever we have to do, Ryan, do you know what we need to?
I'd have to look into it. I don't know if Joe or Brian ever thought of that.
I mean, we would make her the assistant dog ward, but if...
Add it to her job description. Just put another line in.
You said Ag and Marcus.
Ag and Marcus is still in this man, yeah.
She told them that she picked up a dog one time, and they were like, whoa, you can't do that.
That's interesting.
Yeah, yeah. So she wants to go above and beyond, and they don't want, they say you can't do that.
Unless we give you a title.
Unless you're appointed, actually, it says here, unless I have been appointed a DCO. I don't want to be appointed a DCO. You could, like, do me DCO the third, something like that.
Deputy deputy?
Deputy deputy.
Assistant to the...
But like I said, it's just for those, there's been at least four times where that's happened, whether they caught at the border, they're stuck in cars, you know, the police call and say, well, you know, this kid's going to jail, he can't take his dog with him, so I went and got the dog. Beautiful. But then I had to drive it to Wilson, and she's saying that I should have never done that, because the town wouldn't have been liable.
Just ask why you thought you wanted to be, why don't you want to be a DCO? You just don't want that as a project.
Well, because we have a DCO.
She wants to be DCO the third.
I just want to, I just want to be able to, if neither one of the gentlemen could be contacted, which is what has happened, then they call me.
I just wanted to mention in town voice to how many DCOS we could have, correct?
So we'll table it for now, but thank you, Donna. Do you want to touch base on the other issue with the dogs?
Yes, I do. So, with that being said, the town in Lewiston, later on in the meeting, I hope is going to sign a contract with Wilson to accept our dogs. But in the meantime, I've had a meeting with supervisor, myself, Tim Masters, the water department, fire, and the highway department, and the town is looking into building our own shelter with three kennels. We would like to locate it in the back here. After the meeting, you know, with the gentleman, they've given us a direction which we need to go into. But the first thing that needs to be done is some type of plan to submit to Tim, for Tim to say, yep, this can be built this way, where the water lines are, because it has to have certain things. Ag and Marcus say so, it has to have certain things. So I took the liberty and went ahead and gave some of the stuff to Mr. Lannan already to just get the ball rolling. I think that this is an important thing to do, because we don't, you have to drive them all the way to Wilson. As Ben said, that if an officer does pick up the dog, they would be able to bring it here themselves if they, if they want to be DCO nine, and 10, and 11, and 12, you know? It's just, it's going to be, it'll just be easier for everything.
And in fact, I mean, it'll pay for itself eventually. I mean, it's the Wilson, the agreement with Wilson, and I'll move to that. We had, we utilized Lewiston Vet?
Yes.
We utilized Lewiston Vet previously, and they no longer wanted to do it. So we had no place, we had no home for our dogs, which, under agriculture marketing law, we have to have a place to put our dogs. So we reached out to Wilson, and at Wilson, we're at $50 a day.
Yeah, it's tough.
That's fine, because it would be passed on to whoever's dog it was if they stepped forward. The problem is if we go five days without a dog, the owner coming forward, the town pays for that. So we had some substantial bills piling up from Wilson, and Donna and I sat down and said, well, we should do something here. Look at that highway garage, you don't have the infrastructure down there with the water and the electrical, and so we talked to, like I said, we had the meeting, and we came up with that idea. So I'm all for it. We have a town clerk that is very willing to do the work, so we're going to move forward on that. And it's just kind of a heads up that this is going on, we don't need any approval.
Do they have the funding for it?
Yes. We have the H97, is it? Yes, H97, we're for sure.
Marty, you pulled the numbers also on the expenses that we expended each year on that?
I do, I have not at this point in time. I've asked, Donna has.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
When we were discussing going with Wilson. We pulled out the difference between what it costs, the SPCA is not...
SPCA was a little ridiculous.
Plus the time to get to Wilson, if it's, if it's a dog, it's, you know, it's just easier.
Yeah. I mean, Wilson's been great about coming out there, but they're, you know, the vet care and all that, and we're working with the Town of Wanda SPCA, correct?
Yes.
To have an outlet after five days where the dogs would go, so.
Was the Town of Wanda SPCA on the military route?
They moved. They moved out to West Centec.
That's right. Facility out through it.
It's a no-kill shelter, correct?
That's right.
And, yeah, so, but having said that, why don't we move right into the dog sheltering agreement, so.
The board had moved to authorize the dog sheltering agreement with the town of Wilson, and two separate resolutions.
Second. Sorry. We have a motion in a second. Real quick, on discussion, Ryan, this meet, you've gone through and you've worked with Kyle Andrews from the Town of Wilson.